Good, great.
Yep.
All right, I'll call out the beginning of the work team. Please stand for a moment of silence and we will reply.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation united on its own, with its own liberty and justice.
Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Piquel?
Here.
Mr. DePardis?
Here.
Mr. Hayden?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Reider?
Yeah.
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Ms. Wood?
Here.
That's nine present.
Thank you. We did have a closed session prior to this meeting, and for legal and personnel, we also have a closed session afterwards. So I can make that note? There'll be discussion for the after. Board of directors, foundation, did we have anything? Kevin?
Yes.
About our first meeting of the year next week. How about that, Miss Miller?
None.
Moving on, um, the student council.
Um, we don't have a ton going on right now, but we finished up our holiday door decorating competition. It was a big success. Almost everybody, every home room participated.
Um, and with the food, um, donation part of that, we, um, got over, um, about five thousand donations. Five hundred. Five hun- sorry, five hundred. And we donated that all to the, um, St. John's Free Country because we really want to get back, back to our community. Also, there's some, um, during midterms, we gave, um, everyone in this school a, um, pack of gum and a little saying to help do some more off of midterms. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
How would they do?
What?
How would they do?
Um, we're still, it's going. We're halfway through tomorrow at least, but hopefully well.
The gun is good.
Yes, sure, thank you.
Thank you for coming. How are you?
Thank you.
You're nice to see you. Big hair.
Before we public comment, I need to ask for a motion to, um, the agenda to talk about the health and safety.
Megan Smith.
One second. Megan. So I have a first and second, uh, all of our board discussions, we will review it on that. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Chris, can you give us an update on that?
Yes, every six months, we're required to review our health and safety plan. We get the S R funding, so we came into our sixth month in January. So we have to review our health and safety plan, discuss any protocols with that committee, and then maybe, not maybe, make recommendations for any changes. We don't necessarily have to reapprove anything in the plan. Once the plan is uploaded, accepted by the state, it's fine. I'm not going to change the plan itself, but I want to talk tonight about the protocols that I'm recommending to the board. And again, this is just open discussion, absolute open discussion, and where that discussion leads, we'll determine how we move forward. We, no big secret, the COVID's out there, a lot of students have been exposed. We have currently in place with our protocol that anybody who's considered a close contact is quarantined. And right now, if you're vaccinated, you don't fall under that realm, but everyone else is quarantined. I had a discussion with the Health and Safety Committee, talking about, are we over quarantining healthy students? Because in my office, when we're quarantining, I can't tell you how many times it's creating a hardship at home. Your parents are basically telling us what we already know. In-person learning is so important. My child is not sick, but you're forcing them home. There's all kind of research about personal learning. And again, this is just a recommendation, and where it comes out tonight is where we'll move forward. Um, Washington Post, October 5th traded up an article, it's just one of many. If you Google it, you can find everything, you can find all sides of this. So as you know, you can study anything and find it. But I was reading about, about the over quarantining of healthy students, over quarantining the number of healthy students. And I won't talk of a specific physician who I'm in contact with every Monday from public county commissioners. But in conversations with that individual, with one of the individuals, like, it, it, it's hard for me to understand why you are quarantining healthy children when in-person learning is so important. That's one physician's thought. So at the committee meeting, at the health and safety plan, the S R committee meeting, uh, and back up. The reason we had to go through the S R committee, because we are accepting the S R funds, and that's what requires us to have the health and safety plan. If you're recipient of S R funds, you must have the health and safety plan. So we used the S R committee, which is a small microcosm of a community cross-section, to discuss that very issue. Out of that conversation, the support from that group was, yes, we recommend, that small group, we would recommend that we discontinue the forced quarantining of close contacts who are healthy and asymptomatic. With that, took that information and found, and I won't name the districts because it wouldn't be fair to those districts. There are districts that have taken that stance, so we wouldn't be going ahead of anyone, or we wouldn't be pioneers. And the folks that I'm talking to that have moved to that type of model are not seeing any type of increase in cases. I shared with the Health and Safety S R Committee, um, we did a mini-analysis last year on the exact numbers, out of eight hundred and some quarantines going into last summer, and I understand the variant was different. We could only identify one, and we couldn't decide if there was a second. So out of that many students who were quarantined because of being a close contact, it ended up being only one or two masks that actually became COVID positive, which has to be going back to things like this. And I know there's a lot of research out there. What I do know is when we're quarantining healthy students, there's all kinds of research that also talks about the social, emotional, psychological impacts of a child being home. Coupled with, as you know, the state accepted remote learning last year very openly. Then they identified this thing called learning loss, and they're attributing it to too many kids learning at home, reopen your schools. So we are. But now, we've, we're in a situation where we've reopened our schools, in-person learning is important, but we're quarantining healthy individuals that are showing no symptoms. And I can say that's causing a hardship on many families. What am I going to do with my child? That's affecting my work. So what I'm recommending to the board is we allow parent choice. If we make notification to someone who's been in close contact, we legally have a due warning. In, in, in our business, any information that we believe is detrimental to the health, safety, welfare of a child, we're required by law to notify a parent. So the new protocol that I'd like to propose and talk about, which would be a change, would be if someone's identified as a close contact, if you're fully vaccinated or you've been vaccinated, you can prove you've had COVID within the last ninety months. Ninety days. That you're, you're not being forced to quarantine, okay? If there's no COVID symptoms present and you're a close contact, the flow chart basically says, as a parent, we'll give you the choice and say, your, your child's a close contact, by P O D O H, they could be quarantined, but if they're not symptomatic, we'll take them. If you're uncomfortable with that, we will allow you to quarantine, but that'll be your choice. We won't force it. And we'll ask individuals to just monitor, make sure they're not having symptoms, um, and so forth. Where the, where the change comes in, um, would be we're not forced quarantining individuals who have no health issues, aren't showing any symptoms. And in the right, right-hand side of the chart, we're saying, if there are COVID symptoms, then we will, we are going to recommend quarantine. Because you're a close contact, coupled with the fact that you have symptoms, we're going to ask that individual to, to quarantine, and we're going to be recommending testing. If the testing is negative after the five days of quarantine, we come back. If the testing's positive, then obviously that kicks in what happens to all individuals when they're positive. You have to force quarantine. So that's in a, in a basic nutshell. Last week, I shared with the board, we had ninety?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six. So we had over two hundred and some students close to turning fifty quarantined, which, and again, this is Mark Rose talking with professional opinion. If in-person learning is so important, and we know there's a lot of learning loss associated when kids are forced home, and there's psychological, social, emotional. My, we're in the business of educating, I guess my recommendation would be, I prefer to have healthy children. Parents notified, monitored, if they have symptoms, then keep them home. If not, welcome to come in and, and, and continue in the forward. Trying to minimize our number of healthy students home. So that would be the recommended change. And again, that committee is just a very small microcosm of the committee. I've had individuals, you know, full disclosure today, heard about this, some people are upset by it, you know. Once again, you're, we're all over the place. But in my, in my professional opinion, based on the statistics we ran last summer, based on what I'm hearing from some physicians, not all, that we're over quarantining too many healthy kids, which is causing too much distress on families, and sometimes on social, emotional, or even academic impacts on students. I see there's athletes here. The recommendation has nothing to do with athletes, but it would also help students in extracurricular programs also, because if you're healthy, you're a close contact, you're involved in something, you would now not be deemed ineligible because you're under quarantine. So I'm, I'm sharing that as a recommendation. Board can tweet that, board can throw this completely aside and say, we're stick to our current protocol. That's fine. I just want to make sure that you're aware that, um, my recommendation would be that we still follow through with quarantines, but not students that are not showing any symptoms. We allow those students to come. I mean, while it's, open it up, any questions?
I have a question. I'm too common. Um, the first thing I think that's important for parents to remember, that it's also included for choice. You know, you can choose to do L S I if your child's asymptomatic, the therapist is contact, that's your choice. But the other thing I think parents are forgetting, especially those of us who are younger children, is your child can just take a sick day. Like, if your child has COVID and they're positive for COVID, and L S I is too much for your family, and they can't be at school, they can just take that as a excuse access. You know, little kids used to just get sick days all the time, and they'll be able to, the school will patch them up. I wish that I could just, like, sum this up by saying, like, we all, be included, we all need to keep our safe kids home, whether or not they have COVID or not. And then my question for you, Dr. Chris, is if you are vaccinated, but you are symptomatic after being in close contact with COVID, where would you fall in the chart we're already taught?
If you're vaccinated?
But symptomatic.
Symptomatic but not positive?
Well, we wouldn't know if they're positive yet, I guess, for my.
Yeah, basically vaccinated students are not.
Even if they're symptomatic.
If they're symptomatic, yeah. But, yeah, to that point, if they're symptomatic, that sounds.
But if they're symptomatic, we're telling anyone who's symptomatic, stay home.
So even if you're vaccinated, if you are symptomatic, post-COVID.
Okay. If I'm a close contact and I'm vaccinated, but I'm having symptoms, do you fall on that right-hand side of the chart? You're a close contact, you're symptomatic. I don't want to be, I don't even know how I could argue to anybody here, like, yeah, the kid was in close contact, we knew it, and also was developing symptoms, but, no, it would, it would definitely be a quarantine.
I do think that's important for parents to remember as well. It's very simple. If you're symptomatic, you don't have a choice to stay home regardless of anything else. If you're non-symptomatic, you have a choice with the parents.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We're seeing the other end on the right side, I know we had on the left side, some were in there, if the person is symptoms present, we should add in that they're eligible for L S I. I know, I know it's implied, but it doesn't say it there. It does on the left side, it doesn't on the right side.
Anyone who has symptoms would be eligible for L S I. Again, I believe Mr. Layburn, I don't want to call him out on this, I believe it was your building yesterday, and it prolonged, then it was another building. But we had a parent said, you know what, I know I'm in quarantine, I would much rather go, I don't really want to deal with the L S I, but can we just make up the work? And our answer was absolutely. We're offering you that, but if you feel more comfortable just pre-COVID, your child's going to be able to make that work up for work. It'll be an option, it's an option.
And anyone who has done math with teenagers is like, yeah, we'll deal with this here.
And I, and I can emphatically say that, without giving other districts away, the districts that have moved to this type of model, that basically protested the knee, they haven't really seen any change. Hasn't helped things, it really hasn't hurt things, haven't seen a spike, um, which goes back to, maybe we are over quarantining two hundred and fifty-some students to be home, knowing very, very few would possibly actually cause any type of issues concerning, because in-person learning is so important. And remember, every time you have someone on L S I, it's another layer of the teacher trying to manage both sides.
Dr. Chris, to that end, um, you talked about last year, the numbers, are we trending in that respect as well this year with the eight hundred, but only one or two actually?
Yeah, we peaked last year, and if you remember, we, some folks didn't like it, but we anticipated a peak, and it happened right around Christmas, between Thanksgiving and Christmas and thereafter. It looks like that's trending the same, same way with this variant. I did run the specific numbers to see.
Again, this week, first week back from the holidays, obviously, it was, I'm on the first day that we're, extraordinary number of cases, so.
So we're not, I'm not sitting here, again, I'm talking for mental likes, talking for the board unless I've talked to them out of the head. I'm talking for me, I, I don't want to, I can't say, I'm not medically qualified to say anything other than as an educator, we want to enhance our in-person learning to the greatest extent possible. I want it to be parent choice, but I don't want to take situations where parents are forced to make decisions about their very own work, and their very own livelihood by staying home with a healthy child. And I need to trust the fact that if someone is symptomatic, they'll keep going.
Dr. Chris, the only thing I would recommend is just making sure that the language is the same about masking. So, you know, if you're, if you have no COVID symptoms present, you get down to the end, if after five days, no symptoms or resolving symptoms are present, then the isolation period may be ended. However, you'll be asked to wear a mask around others through day ten. So if we could just carry that same language on the other areas.
Use the word recommended in both sides.
Yeah. One's strongly encourage, the other one says, well, we asked.
And I would just say recommend.
And for the community, it keeps affecting it, if you are in close contact and you have no symptoms present, the school leadership would recommend that you still wear a mask because you're close contact. And if you're positive after five-day quarantine, because we all know that the CDC has shortened the quarantine time for if you are positive, that they would ask that you would wear a mask.
Ms. Wick, do you have a question?
Yes, can you hear me? Okay, so right at the, per our quarantining policy right now, we're following what the CDC recommends with the five-days quarantine and the five-days mask. So right in that center box where it comes down, it says, if you are fully vaccinated, do you have a slot? I can't see if you have a slot there for everyone to see, or if you're just looking at it, but there's a big center box. If you're fully vaccinated or had COVID-19 and recovered in the last ninety days, then you're not required to quarantine, but must provide medical documentation upon returning to school. In that box, I think we could also add, if both, um, contacts were masked, were fully or correctly masked to that box, because I think that still applies, if both were correctly masked, that there would not be the quarantining even right now. So that might be a suggestion?
Yep, we can do that for clarity.
And then I would maybe put an arrow to the right and to the left of that big box, because that would handle what Megan was referring to, as far as, even if you are fully vaccinated, even if you have had COVID in the last ninety days, or even if both were masked, if you're experiencing no symptoms, you follow the chart on the left, and if you're experiencing symptoms, you follow the chart on the right. And then to Megan's other point, if you go to, to the left and you have the no COVID symptoms present, um, the students, the box to the right there, where it says, students may continue to attend school, um, I would, to Anthony's point and Megan's point, that she just made put there with the same wording, um, that Jen recommended, you know, would still be asked to mask if they were in contact with coming to school. You have a choice, you can do L S I, or you can come to school, but if you come to school, it would be, however, then it would be recommended, strongly recommended, that you would wear that mask for ten days around others. That would be my only suggestions to, besides what's already been suggested.
And I'd like to say, just so everybody knows, we just got this protocol, like, we're just looking at it now, and we're discussing it with each other. So I feel we need more time to discuss this than to just implement it abruptly and have it start tomorrow morning. I don't know how the board feels about that, but I would just like to discuss, there's different verbiage, different, there's so many questions and loopholes, but I would just feel more comfortable having more discussion with the other members.
We're not voting to adopt this. This is, this is what the, the committee.
Right, but we're discussing it right now.
Right.
Discussing.
And we're making modifications, yeah, and we're making modifications to the comment.
And the board could say, we want more discussion, and if.
I'm just saying, I want more discussion.
And if, and if the board does want more discussion, then we have to do that, but.
You're going to have to. This has to be done.
And I, I understand that, I'm just saying that the COVID number is increasing, and I think it's not appropriate to say, we're doing this tomorrow morning. You know, I just, I just feel we need more discussion.
I mean, and ask the board, do you want to delay this till February?
I think that the, um, problems awaiting it will be though, then if ninety-six students have positive for COVID tomorrow, or I don't have a clear. But like, do you feel more like, um, maybe we should continue the quarantine, everyone is a close contact? No, I believe in it personally, I just feel like I, I just received it, and I just want to hear what everybody has to say. You know, just go back and forth. Isn't it so overwhelming trying to make decisions for other people's children regarding their health, like it's just so, right? No, I was an nurse, so, no, I have a medical background. I mean, I know, I know what's important, and I'm in the schools with the kids, but I just, um.
Do I have, do I have four other, do I have four other board members in light of the discussion in February? Just wait off one of the whole thing. Is the concern with, it will maybe tomorrow, we could say, okay, we're going to adjust or recommend that we adjust the procedure, the future procedures start next month, and then you get this out tomorrow, then you have time to look.
I think so, I think giving the public a time to say, this is what our plan is, let them digest that. And if they would want, if they feel uncomfortable with their child going to school and knowing that this plan is in action, they then have time to take appropriate action to maybe, you know. Get them on L S I.
Next Monday or next Tuesday.
Implement this, that two hundred and fifty kids that were quarantined last week to return to school tomorrow. But to that point, I can appreciate if there's families who have.
Right, we're getting, you know, like, ten hours to, you know.
To decide whether that.
Yeah, to react, I mean, this is your child, they're talking about, you need to make the.
Yeah, I mean.
And I don't know if it's an appropriate time to bring this up. At some point, I think we as a board need to have a conversation regarding L S I and the future of Mars cyber and things like that, because I do fear that children will withhold the cyber charter. The threat numbers, without access to L S I.
Yeah, we can discuss that now if you want. So, I mean, I'll talk openly about L S I. L S I was designed last year to try to get us through in a situation we were uncomfortable with, we weren't sure what it was going to look like. We did experience a year of L S I, and we, we did realize that that created, it compromised the ability to teach in person. And my recommendation continues to be, I don't know of any other district, and I'll just say that out loud, I think last year we created something, and it became an expectation, when in reality, I know a lot of the other schools, at least all of the ones that I know of, it doesn't mean.
Any, any doesn't sell inside.
Yeah, but the majority of those that I've spoken to, because they experienced the same thing that we have, have basically eliminated that, because it's very taxing for the individuals in the classroom. And I think we heard that, that theme over and over. But here's the issue, the, the real issue is, um, that's another decision discussion that the board would have to have, I'll implement.
Based on the numbers.
But I, I don't recommend that we move to a model where L S I is an option, because in-person learning is so important, it's being stressed. And I read about this all the time, too. Not only is it being stressed about the learning loss and the social, emotional pieces of that, um, it does compromise our in-person instruction, to the point that I wouldn't want to jeopardize what happens in the classroom. That's just my opinion, and then the board can direct some future discussions on what to do with L S I. But, um, I know when Dr. McMahon and I met with teachers the end of last year, it, it was, basically, we were wimping to the finish line.
At some point, would there be enough kids now, if you told one teacher per grade, eight through six, and that would be L S I teachers? So if your child was quarantined, they will know that teacher, even if they weren't in the same place. Their lesson, it's still in-person instruction via the internet, but people who maybe felt that, whether their child's immunocompromised, they have a family member at home that makes them feel unsafe due to COVID, they're pulling for cyber charter because they want an online education, you know, maybe they want to go to their lighthouse when we come, I don't know. But would there be the numbers, that there would be a possibility, at least eight through six? I understand after sixth grade, it becomes significantly more dicey for one teacher per grade to be assigned to L S I, so that teachers aren't, because right now, you know, my son tells me this all the time, the school nurse comes into the classroom, and all of a sudden, this child's positive, and the teacher's teaching online, the kids at home, and kids in the room, and they're, hey, we have to stop, we can't be in quarantine. Is there a way to differentiate that?
Based on numbers and committed numbers, you could possibly look at that, but you would have to have a commitment from those individuals that's saying, if that's what they're like, think they're staying there, because you wouldn't want that having flooded where your compromising ability that, you know, it's easier. It'd be something to look at.
I just would be interested to hear also, when we hear from the community a lot, as a board, that they want this magical, you know, cyber, people schooling option, you know, we hear that people go white more cyber, maybe cyber charter's not the right fit, and what we hear is they want Mars teachers and Mars curriculum, and really, it feels like they want L S I, right? So I don't know if that's something we look into, that maybe would save our tax payers money as well.
Oh, we could certainly explore it if we identified those that many out there that, like, what that type of delivery, it would impact staff.
It would be a very, it would be a sustainable model, and there's so many factors about that, I don't want to get too far into some of these in my guesses, but, you know, a, a online teacher has a much logical class logicically in, in those environments. If you start talking about, you know, thirty, forty kids per grade, times six grades, I don't think we have two hundred and forty people that, that right now that want to go, that I'm aware of, that have come to the same one, you know, L S I, all the time model, that I'm, I mean, I guess it would, we really have to look at that. I mean, it's, it's a lot different than saying that three kids per grade, one kid, you have that.
It's a pretty complex thing. I get it, I understand, it's just, it's a very difficult.
And for how many years are we going to do a quarantine? Like, I don't know, we thought, this would be, I have a three months last year, so, like, a long-term plan of how to do our kids more consistently.
So the modification of the health and safety plan, if we, my, my biggest concern about this right now is if we don't activate it relatively soon. We have midterms going on, and the kids that are quarantined, that, I'm not saying they shouldn't be quarantined, but if they can be back and doing their midterms and school, I think it'd be a huge benefit to those kids.
And I would agree, because pending anything else, we're still following the quarantine model of the five days that they're symptomatic here.
Correct.
That was a big part of our discussion, is just that, if they're asymptomatic, there's no reason why they shouldn't be in person, if that's what they, their parents want.
Well, that's a good summary. It's more taking a look at what we're currently doing, not changing a whole lot other than if you're healthy, we're not going to say.
It's, we are giving people time to at least.
Just give them enough notice, you know, they, please, this is to implement it, you know?
It's still the choice, you will do it today, right?
Under this, I guess. Yeah, if somebody's uncomfortable, saying, somebody's, I don't like, it's parent choice, if it comes to parent choice, they're not a good.
If a parent's comfortable with the child, like, if your belief system is that a child who is immunocompromised, but is in close contact, is now with your child, like, if that's, I think, the key aspect. Like, parents might want to pull their children if they feel that that's not safe, for their, their personal choice. The parent, parental choice goes both ways, right? Parents have feelings on both sides of this.
I just need five board members to agree that either we're going to implement it now, or we're going to wait till Monday.
So, is the quarantine doesn't affect their midterms? Because our midterms.
Midterms are in, like, the middle of it right now, like, high school terms, I know.
Mr. Hayden, you have lived students Monday and Tuesday.
So, that's right. So you can, it's really, we can have. So if, if we decide not to do this now, then it's basically, it's not going to help the kids that are quarantining, they're healthy, that could be there taking out midterms. I guess that's more my point. If, if you're quarantined, you not feel safe, then absolutely stay home. That's, that's my feeling. I just need four board members to either agree with me or agree with somebody else. Can I get a motion to move forward?
Just those clarifications, like LSI eligible, just as credit said, aware of, that Ms. Wick pointed out, making the bottom two central boxes consistent. I think those are the suggestions. The case has happened still?
Yes. Have a first or have a second? Just have a second. Any other board discussion?
This may, I think we should wait and implement like the pressure.
Any other board discussion, I guess, maybe on, on implementation.
I guess just for clarification, you're talking implementation as of tomorrow.
Correct, and that was Mr. Miller's question. As we discussed.
Yeah, essentially it means that, that as of tomorrow, if someone's close contact, they're not in the choice of quarantine, they're not being forced to quarantine. They have the option of quarantine and instead of being forced like they are today, they can stay home if they want. They can go to LSI or they're healthy, and stressed healthy, and come to school. Sick or anything, cold, flu, stomach bug, stay home, so it doesn't, it's spread around. Tongue bug went around middle school, so you're good, you don't have to. You're sick, stay home.
And they are to wear a mask for ten days.
And.
Yeah.
That would be lighter.
Yeah, it has. Any other board comments? On the roll call, please? So we hold up on the roll calls. And we'll. So when this, when this.
That's a good idea.
We have a first and a second. We'll listen to the public about. Yeah, if anybody wants to public, we talk about it anytime, you can do that, actually. So is there anybody in the room? I have a sign up sheet, so it's like Brian Carr signed up to do.
Do you want to separate out maybe people who want to talk about this first to who's go on a bunch of subjects?
How are you gonna do it? I was just going to come online. Is anyone.
Consolidated response.
Public comment items, besides it looks like number seven. Because everybody here signed up for number seven. And is it an agenda item?
Well, now that you added it.
Go ahead.
So, yay.
So I need your, name and your address and you'll have three minutes. And this is not question and answer and it's not debate and not talking about personnel. So go ahead. And we're limiting it to thirty minutes.
Uh, Julia, can it speak two thousand six Max Lane Mars? I'm glad that you brought that up about the, um, health and safety of, of not only the medical health and safety of the children, but their mental health. And I was going to talk about this later on, now I could save it if I have time for other things. Um, but I wanted to, um, I wanted to know what the school was doing about mental health. And this, I think, will help, um, getting healthy children back to school. The American Academy of Pediatrics released in December and in coordination with the adolescent psychiatry and children's hospital association, they declared a national emergency in children's mental health. That this is all about protecting the mental health of students. Um, I also wanted to remind the board that we, we do have a fourteen point four percent autism enrollment in Mars School District, but we also have other health impairment is twenty point eight percent with our latest Penn data, which way higher than the state average. Other health impairment is anxiety disorders, ADHD, and this whole spectrum of disorders that can not only get them an IEP, but sometimes they aren't on a five oh four plan and everything like that. But with anxiety disorders and ADHD with a lot of our kids, I could see a lot of anxiety going undiagnosed just from the fact that we have COVID, learning loss, quarantining, and the, the implications of, of COVID in itself. So my question, um, and also something to think about would be, um, for our mental health. You know, we had those two suicides last month at Fenica Valley. Are the counselors given mental health tools and resources at the school? Um, they could go on to healthychildren.org or they can actually, I don't know if they're screening, there are screening, um, tools for, uh, the counselors. Are they using those to identify children who, um, have these types of anxiety disorders? And also interventions, um, like given handouts, managing anxiety tips for families that are already out there? What are we doing in, at the district to protect the mental health? Not just the, you know, this health, I mean, I was a nurse, this is, I completely agree with, um, getting these kids back to school mentally. Um, but my kids still go to school in a mask because I need them to be in-person learning and not get, get COVID. Um, because they also have other medical problems. So my, my question is to think about before, can we, can we really include in the, in that plan, mental health for these students?
And just so you know, with the ESAR requirements, we must include that.
Okay.
And Dr. McMahon and I had spoken today and we even, um, we actually went into the comprehensive plan today.
Yes.
And we actually up. Uploaded it, but we enhanced it by talking about the professional development that we're going to be implementing with our teachers, which would include counselors and all of the above.
Okay. Good, because I tried to download it to see what we were doing. Um, and I noticed the link isn't working anymore.
Which is funny, we realized today we missed it. It's just funny you bring it up.
Yeah.
And we went in and we added the social emotional.
Yay, perfect, that's all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Comment on agenda items?
Could we comment just on the last conversation you guys had?
Yeah, that's what.
Okay, yeah. I'm not on your list.
No, you don't have to, I just need your name and your.
Jeff Maple, two thirteen, Action Court.
And you have three minutes.
Yeah, sure. Just maybe more of a suggestion, anything, um. A model that I'm following is, uh, you know, and I understand the midterms, you're in the middle of midterms right now, that's stressful on the kids. Um, and some of them are stuck at home stressing out, worried about it. But couldn't the midterm date easily just, the due date or the grades when you turn them in, couldn't that not easily be extended until like next Friday? Or whenever that date is and allow them to make it up next week or in those three days? And to budget in time for them to do that, you could follow a type of activity schedule where you have buffered in an extra forty minutes, whether it's in the morning, afternoon, where those students can go in who did miss the midterm and kind of retake the period, if that makes any sense. Kind of agreed to make decisions on your flow chart and implement it in twelve hours. And, you know, that's going to be tough on parents. So I just thought maybe it could be a suggestion to think about just pushing back the due date of when grades are due. Allow them three days and make up their midterms for the, what they missed this week. I know some of them missed them already, so. That's all. They have three days of a activity period, just come in and make up the test when that activity.
I think it's great to say this, I don't usually comment, I'll come with a. One thing I'm proud of with our teaching staff is they really have done a great job in making accommodations for individuals that have a compelling reason to. Yeah, I don't, I think the pockets, if any, are small. I think the majority of our teachers recognize some of the complexities of the environment we're in and are being much more attuned to the needs of students that may need things. So it's probably on a case by case basis.
It's good, but.
If you're gonna say in that case, you would have to back the, the due date for teaching the grades. For them, right, in order for them to be able to stand in the show. They would need a little more time to grade it and then obviously.
Yeah, and I think, I guess what I'm saying is probably too late, that's a great suggestion, probably too late to do it mass, in mass. But I think, I know for a fact our teachers are very accommodating, students with compelling needs and issues as our principals are. Working with kids, students, so.
It's, I'm just commenting, I mean, just, it's more about the student than it is for the teachers. And me being a teacher of, just it takes away the stress off that student. Allowing them, knowing today that, all right, relax, we're gonna have time to make up the midterm. That's all.
Anyone else in the room wish to have public comment?
Yeah.
Great. Paul. Two eighteen, Hespen Hyden.
I agree with everything that's been said up to this point. I think the kids and the families maybe need more time to digest this. And if you were to bring it up today, vote on it and approve it, um, at least give us some time to formulate our position.
So, thank you. Anyone else wish to have public comment in the room? On agenda items? Go ahead.
Yeah, Garrett Ringler, two twenty was from Shank Road. Uh, just like say that I urge to implement this policy immediately. That you're, you're assuming that the current policy, we need time for those parents that are nervous about asymptomatic children walking around, around their children. And that's negating or to the detriment of the parents who are waiting for their non-symptomatic children to go back to school every day and every hour that they're not in-person learning is a detriment to those children. So you're, you're, you're giving parental choice to one group of people at the expense of them. And like Dr. Rose said, it's paramount that these kids do not get denied the in-person learning that the district needs to, needs to supply. That's what you're here for, in-person learning. Asymptomatic children do not need to be ever denied that.
Thank you. Can I add a comment? I should have made this clear earlier, the way I watched you made a comment, everyone else has the opportunity and then you can come back and make a comment. Um, so I'll keep that in mind. Is anyone else in the room wish to have public comment on agenda item? Actually, just what we're talking about, because we're gonna open up to the whole agenda items here in a second. Does anyone in the Zoom world have a public comment on the, um, health and safety? Chart? Anyone out there in the gym wants to have an agenda item? Seeing none, we have time now, we'll open up to all agenda items. But this gentleman. I'm sorry.
Second child.
I'm sorry. Sorry. I, I truly. Name and address.
Greg Holt, two eighteen, Hespen Hyden. I, I think the health, the physical health and emotional and everything, we're looking out for the best interest of children. If the statistical, uh, cases increased dramatically, um, I don't think giving parents a choice is in the best interest of their physical health, not only the kid, but the rest of the youth. Right? So, um, I don't think we should change anything if the numbers are steadily increasing as percentage.
Thank you. Anyone else that previously liked to comment again on the same subject? Now we're gonna move on to agenda items in general. And we're getting, what about fifteen minutes? So we have time for a sign up sheet. That looks like Brian Carr signed up.
Brian Carr, uh, twenty thirty eight Eagle Ridge Drive. Uh, first of all, wow, you guys are really earning your salaries with all this COVID discussion on the school board.
I knew we didn't say. We want to run next year.
Uh, in, in all seriousness.
You get the battle penny.
With regards to, um, agenda item number seven, um, I know that the board was presented with a lot of information in the last month or so. Uh, regarding this topic, um, I was part of that group, uh, many are here, uh, that put that together. And just on behalf of myself, I won't speak for anybody else, uh, thank you for taking that seriously. Um, on top of COVID or anything else related to mental, uh, physical health, whatever the case might be. Um, that was, that was a big priority for us. And so, uh, again, we appreciate you taking that information that was presented seriously and acting on it. I do have a question, if that's allowed, uh, with respect to number seven. With respect to, uh, the process of, of the search of that process, how will that happen? Because I believe the athletic directors typically part of the search for age. So if you can maybe explain or get into a little bit of detail around how that process would happen.
I can comment.
You can answer.
I, I can just say that's still being considered on how it would be done, knowing the dynamics there.
Okay.
That's a discussion that'll ensue on the process. Knowing, you know. The current situation.
So yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Eric.
Warbaugh.
Warbaugh, sorry.
That's all right. So again, like Brian. Sorry, Eric Warbaugh, five zero three three, Northfield Drive. And, uh, just want to thank the board as well for, for taking those, uh, comments seriously. As you can see, it means a lot to, for these boys here. And assuming the motion carries, uh, I, I would just implore you to talk to these kids and their need for a dynamic leader, uh, who teaches life lessons, who leads from the front and teaches them respect, hard work, discipline. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, looks like Greg is a pillar or home?
Home. I think you heard from me.
You're signed up with agenda number seven.
I think we cleared out the first and it's the last.
Yeah.
Greg.
G R E T. Uh, anyone else in the room wish to have public comment on agenda?
Uh, Jeff Maple, two thirteen, Action Court. Again, just to echo what they're saying, I want to commend you guys for seriously taking this seriously. It's not easy after the tenure that's been had and being commended for that tenure and the job he's done. Um, but I would commend you guys for bringing it forward, but also want to give recognition to the football team who's standing in the back. They need to be commended for standing up for their feelings and, uh, their views on the situation. So I just wanted to make a public comment and congratulate that football team standing behind us for, um, coming together and making a stand and, and speak out to their administrators and come forward. It's not easy to do, um, as a teenager, so that's it.
Yeah, I still wanted one of these teenagers to tell us that they think about our new COVID policy.
Only pay great.
I want to know either way.
Is there anyone else in the room wish to have public comment on agenda items? Anyone in the room want to have a public comment on agenda items? I'll try to, I'll try to zoom over again. Let me just say your name and address.
Uh, Nolan S. Road, three thousand Crinicle Lane. So speaking on behalf of the football team and one of the people who ended us here, uh, we again want to reiterate, we're saying an extended thank you for taking into consideration what's been said about our coach over the past month and, uh, taking charge and doing, and making a change that we all feel was needed. And we fully stand behind what, the change that is being, like, you know. Thank you.
No, how do you know about being non-symptomatic?
Name and address.
Could you give me your name and address again?
Nolan S. Road, three thousand Crinicle Lane. Oh, you mean to tell my last name?
Yeah, could you?
N E S S D L R O A D.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to? Yeah. Anyone else in the room wish to have a public comment on agenda items at this point? If not, may come back if there's somebody on the Zoom world, so. Is there anyone on Zoom that wish to have public comment at this point?
Yeah. Kelly Roswell.
If you can unmute, Kelly. Kelly, was it Ross, yes, Kelly Roswell, are you there?
Sorry, that was an accidental bump. Nothing.
Well, it's good to hear from you. Is there anyone else on Zoom that wish to have public comment, but not accidentally? Anyone else?
Suzanne Hall. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Is your wife here right now?
Say your name or address if you want to do this.
Okay, Suzanne Hall, two eighteen, Hespen Hyden Road, that, that is my husband and I have two boys in the back. And I, I want to thank you for taking, as people have said before, taking this. And I want to thank you for taking, as people have said before, taking this seriously. Those boys put in a lot of their love to the football team. And I think they deserve a coach who gives as much to the team as the team gives to the coach. And so I just want you to think about that as you start your search for a new coach because that's a group of dedicated boys who really puts a lot into that team. And I know that they have a group of coaches that are there that they know, believe in them. But unfortunately, the person at the lead recently has not done that. And I would just implore you to look for somebody who is willing to put as much effort into it as the boys in the back are to the team. That's all.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else on the Zoom?
Teresa Rose.
Teresa Rose, if you could just say your name, your address and what agenda item to refer to.
Hi, yes, my name is Teresa Rhodes. I live at three fifteen Clay Avenue in Mars. I have spoken to you all before about the masking policies. And so now we're voting on some more health and safety issues. This is the first time I have the privilege of addressing the new board members. So thank you for being here and talking to everyone about these important issues. As a lot of you know, I do have an at-risk child. I know not everyone has an at-risk child and everyone has differing opinions on this. But I would really implore you to think about those kids and how they also deserve to go into school safely. Really, contact tracing is the bare minimum to keep these kids safe. So I really just want you to think about those children as well. You're not forcing any children to do anything other than what they should do according to scientific guidance and the CDC. You know, and as a nurse myself, I know that not everyone gets sick. Not everyone does, but some people do. And my kid would likely be one of those, those children who is also being refused live streaming capabilities at seven years old. He's not capable of learning through our cyber program, which is not that great. He's not able to teach himself, he needs a teacher. So really, I need you to do the bare minimum to keep all the children safe. And I thank you for listening to me. Please just keep that in the back of your head.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom that wish to have a public comment on agenda items? Is there anyone else on Zoom that wishes to have a public comment on agenda items? If not, we do have like six more minutes if anybody else in the room would like that public comment on agenda items. Saying none, we'll move on to the agenda. Before we have anything on the board, Dr. Grace wanted to get your comment on this one coming up.
Yeah, and I know you had heard that, and it's true. We're members saying we just received this. At the last board meeting, I had shared that we're going to be meeting with that committee. That committee met last Wednesday. So between last Wednesday and now, we've been formulating sort of a draft. So it is a correct statement that the board is just getting this new information, new proposal. But we wanted to meet with the committee last Wednesday, try to get our thoughts together and get it to the board. So this hasn't been sitting for a while. It's just our meeting literally just occurred less than a week ago.
So we're back on to the, I have a first and a second. Any more discussion on health and safety? This side of the room? This side of the room? So seeing the discussions, I have a person on the second cover, we'll call. Just so we clarify when I guess we're voting. Implementing this tomorrow. Right, we're implementing. Those changes suggested by Ms. Wick and Mr. DePrattis. And then this will be posted, if it would pass, it would be posted on the website.
Yes, I know Josh and I've been working on this and we're prepared that if it's adopted and if it goes on the platform, we'll get that out.
Can we roll call please?
Mr. DePrattis?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Lentz?
No.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
No.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Ms. DiCuccio?
Yes.
So like Dr. Grace said, this chart will be posted on the website probably a few later for tonight or tomorrow. Yes.
Will it be posted before the students come to school tomorrow when it's implemented?
We have it posted. Sure, I think we do.
Will a communication be going out, Dr. Gross, to the community before and as it did?
Yes, Josh is here and we, he has something already ready, if and when it was approved. So we can get that out immediately.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from December seventh? And? Okay. Minutes?
Megan Simmons.
Second. Board discussion comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, aye? So passes. Under personnel, can I have a motions for numbers one through four and six and seven? Seven to move. So I have a first and a second. Discussion comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
That passes. Under personnel, number five, can I have a first and a second?
Megan Simmons.
Justin Simmons. I have a first and a second.
What's going on? Yeah, there needs to be clarification on it under the, with regard to after thirty days work in the school year rate. So my understanding was this was going to start January first of this year. And then for next school year, that thirty days will apply.
Starting July, we're just starting school.
So it's effective January first?
For two thousand twenty-one.
For twenty-one and then July first.
You're going to retroactive to January one.
Any other board discussion?
Megan, I'm glad to see that we're addressing this, I mean, at least more in line with other school districts. I anticipate it still not as much money per hour, but I'm hopeful that this will increase our setting. And if you happen to have time and you're interested in studying for the Marjorie School District, it would really help our special and not ask my classes, it would be really, really great. And I will do it, just because I'm not on the board.
Any other board discussion comments? All in favor, aye? Opposed, aye? That passes. On the main agenda, under finances, numbers one through fourteen, can I have a first and a second? I know it's on the first one, she got one, one, four and then five. Can I have a motion for finances, numbers one through fourteen?
PM present.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, aye? So that passes. On the main agenda, under programs, can I have a motion for numbers one through four? Seven to move.
Number one, second.
Dr. Kevin McCall. Board discussion comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, aye? That carries. On the main agenda, under policies, a first and a second?
Megan Simmons. Yeah.
Board discussion comments?
This is just we're posting these calls because they're all revised. If anybody wants to read the calls, we can.
We post them.
Comment next time.
Yeah, we post them for thirty days and then we'll put on a map for thirty days. Any other board comments, questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries. On the main agenda, under other, numbers one through nine, can I have a motion? Seven to move. Anthony, second.
I thought Megan was, I thought that was a couple of change.
Number nine?
Nobody told me I wasn't doing it, but apparently this is a discussion I wasn't part of, so some people.
Warbaugh, conversation. So Megan Lentz, why don't you give? Elections better?
No, it's a representative appointed by action of four times for the nomination.
It's motion. Is there a conversation?
I'm going with Megan Dunne, if there's any issues over there, I don't want another committee.
Board questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you, Warbaugh, for the donation. And also from the board.
Any other board discussion comments?
Actually, sorry, I have one. I guess it's just a question for Dr. McNamee. It's actually, because it's my understanding that this grant is, does it come every year?
Okay.
Okay, the only thing I think that I would ask is that maybe we ask the teachers a little bit later in the year instead of right? Okay. Okay, this was for fall. Okay. Anybody, anybody, just as they open up to you, things that they're thinking about, and then we come back around. Okay. That's how it's meant for the past four weeks. Okay, so they're asked in September, is that what?
Yeah, it's in September and we give them the, well, actually, I'd like to, from the very first faculty meeting agenda in August.
Okay.
Say, hey, that's why I was doing this again.
I guess that's what I'm concerned about.
And then it has like, they have like three weeks, then it's turned in.
Okay, so I'm wondering if it's with COVID, it's just like they can't even wrap their heads around what they need.
We used it in the past.
Okay. Okay.
Is there a way to extend it to like, I don't know, October thirty-first? Oh, we have extended it, we just didn't get anything. So what happened was I then wrote to, and I think you guys saw the email.
Yeah.
I was saying, hey, can we have this superintendent grant?
Yeah.
Like we just weren't asking for it. It just slowly just like leave money sitting on there.
I agree. Yeah.
So hopefully, I mean, hopefully, like I said, he'll do it again and again for us. He's extremely generous.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. McNamee, for writing this up and utilizing print.
Yeah.
Any other board questions, comments, concerns? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, aye? That passes. Did I forget anything on the agenda? So moving on to public comment, we've come to our second portion of public comment. At this point, you have public comment on anything? We'll start in a room if you have a lot, have a public comment early. We'll just start with public comment in the room. Does anyone wish to have a public comment in the room?
It's Julia Knessky, two thousand six Maxwell Lane, Mars. And I'm just wanted to let you know that I'm the manager of the Mars middle school hockey team. And I'm really proud of them. They had two service projects that they did in the fall, one right before Christmas. One that they volunteered with special needs hockey at Halloween and did a spooky skate with a special needs hockey team. And they were so good with the athletes with special needs. And also at Christmas, we did a food drive with help from Horsey and JV, kind of like they at the end. But we did three hundred pounds of food and we gave it to the White House Foundation. So these boys, kind of making it my goal to, it's better, you know, hockey is a privileged sport and we're trying to show kindness and, you know, and spread it wherever we go. And they're doing really well. These kids are, middle school kids are excellent. And I also wanted to talk about reading rockets program. My son was in the reading rockets program and he did really well. His learning support teacher was actually his teacher for reading rockets. I'm glad to see that we're continuing to use it. First of all, I'm glad that we're using the answer funds for that because way back in budget time, I, we were talking about it. And I'm so happy that we're putting it into MTSS. My question is, to further get into reading rockets and literacy in the school, we have the health and safety committee, the F funds committee. Do we have anything like a literacy team? Like a group of community members, even the parent advisory committee for special ed that I'm on? Do we have a group of parents that we could also get with educators? You know, and the reading specialists and do like a literacy team to kind of make sure we're still like on track of things like reading rockets, listed a positive, what data did we collect? And to see if we've made an impact on children who have COVID learning loss. But also, is it something we should continue, just to have a reading club or a literacy club? Because I think that that's something we should, we should track. There's a lot of, you know, especially with the Sunday program. The Sunday program was purchased with funds from the PTO and that is paid through six money for all students, not just kids with special needs. That's every student, which is what MTSS is, it's not a special, you know, initiative. So the Sunday program, if we start doing that at reading rockets, this time, track data, kids we've identified that can really benefit from the Sunday program and help not only target kids with dyslexia or just basic, you know, foundations of, you know, learning structured literacy. So I just wanted to know, like, if we can use that curriculum maybe this time around for reading rockets, hopefully we continue reading rockets. But also, how do we track data? Sorry, I'm over my time, but I haven't been here in a while, John. I mean, this freaking, being the Mars hockey, like, middle school, it's every Tuesday practically. So you guys are lucky. I've had all this in my mouth. I've got a lot here, I'm not going to talk about it. All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other public comment in the room? Anyone else wish to have a public comment at this point? Seeing none, I move on to the Zoom world. Anyone wish to have a public comment at Zoom? Anyone on Zoom wish to have a public comment at this point? Seeing none, I move on. Is there anyone from MIDA?
Good evening, everybody. This is Sharon Letnicki. First of all, I'd like to, we would like to thank the parents and the students for their patience as we maneuver through this COVID and juggle the changes that occur daily. Their patience is greatly appreciated. I would also like to thank the board for recognizing the difficulty the sub shortage has had on the staff and administration within the district by raising the subpay and incentive to reflect those of other districts in the area. This can only hopefully affect us positively. Thank you for your time and have a nice evening, everybody.
Thank you. Administration comments. Dr. Gross?
Only comment I'd like to make is this is board appreciation on. So prior to the meeting this evening, we had a dinner together and just as our thanks to the board members. I know someone alluded to the fact about pay. These folks do this voluntarily and it's lots of long hours and lots of concisions. And I just want to thank the board on behalf of the community and students and staff. Thanks for all you do and dedicating your lives to volunteerism in this business. Couldn't have picked a better time. But happy board appreciation, we appreciate all you do. Or happy appreciation. Month, I said day.
Anyone dinner, but. Dr. McNamee?
This is, we at our mid-six month check with our federal funding committee meeting yesterday morning. And we have then reviewed about our reading rockets or after school, I think, other programs, including the MAP tutoring at the secondary level. And one of the suggestions was made to, let's see, let's look to parents, is that still a date? Of the day of the week, it still works for your schedule, just because as activities change and months change, everything like that. So the surveys went out on Friday, just we'll be seeking the inputs from the parents as to, is this still a date for you? And the majority will rule on what day, so we're guys on the sample. And the elementary building in the fall, we had Mondays. I can't say it's going to be Mondays, so we're kind of awaiting the results of that back. With regards. Um, with regards to the reading materials, it's at the teachers discretion, sort of what to use, so there's something very different things. And so it's, it's individual teachers picking and choosing, but yes, we do have um Sunday, we have foundations, we have Wilson. Um, and along that note, I would say that we brain work, Dr. McMahon, we're coming back next to the service day, because we train for foundation, which is that fundamental piece feeding into. Um, we train kindergarten right now, we're first using those materials, so we're training first grade on Monday in preparation for next year. Because we'll roll this out and then follow it next year, we'll turn second grade to roll it out, so it's kind of a sequence of order here. Um, but as you know, we follow her need explicitly, telling us exactly how we need to do it, what we need to do, and um, we're lucky to have her. She's a great resource here in the Marjorie School District. Um, she's, not only has she done the professional development piece with the, the staff, she's also been done in classrooms. Instead of the teachers, would you like, I mean, the model, would you want to teach it and I'm going to critique it? And they've been welcoming to that and um, some have said, no, let me do it, and others have said, hmm, you do it, and then we come back, I'll do it, that's fine too. Um, because it's a lot to learn, it's a lot to um, to get handled, but we're doing a really nice job, so we're excited about that. And then also, just coming back, you had mentioned about social emotion, how we're known, our top guidance counselors, our social workers, that's the task that they're actually working on. Monday is our own resources evidence, because we want to have a day in February to share our social helping out, uh, wellness issue, your staff as well as students. Yeah, so we want to talk about it breaking down by grade levels of how we address the little ones, your social emotional versus how we address both, you know, big children and the higher stage level. But then also, how about teachers, you have your social emotional issues too, so we are working on that, and that will be on the agenda of February date, okay? Um, other than that, again, reading rockets and the comic club and then the after school math tutoring, we are hoping to push it forward. I don't know the exact dates yet, we'll have our surveys back, we'll be looking at that on Friday. And um, if all goes well, we look to push it out on the week of the twenty-fourth here in January. And then just as a shout out as a reminder, I know I'm early, but parts of incoming kindergarteners, looking at next month on February twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, here in the admin building. They'll be handing out the kindergarten packets as well as the lottery ticket. Lottery is completely optional, parents do not have to participate in lottery, the lottery is only for those individuals who wish to attempt to have a selection versus AM versus PS position of the year and team. Any questions? I cannot sell my lottery ticket. You may not sell your lottery ticket, absolutely no pricing, no landscape and nothing, you must review your lottery ticket, physically bring the lottery ticket with your completed registration packet. And I'm going to be saying this as a burden for everybody, we will be putting out that, parents of incoming kindergarten students, please, if there's any questions about your registration packet, we will be happy to review it with you. You can set up an appointment, we will blow your packet individually, one-on-one with you, because we've had so many people come to us thinking they've got it done, only to find a mistake and then bumped out of that. I've had teachers, teachers in the Marjorie School District, I was like, I'm on the hall, didn't do it, but I'm glad that they understand. So I can't stress them, we will review your packet with you one-on-one, please, you do not want to bump your other lottery, especially if you're having that A of ticket. And frankly, for the board recognition, we've had some questions about, you know, possibly leaving that process to online, the burden for, for the working parent, is that something that we can be investigating? Well, we had, um, we took it out, like the local school districts, like Kindrichland and Seneca Valley, like, how are you doing, you were compared to how we're doing ours? And um, the one thing I noticed of Seneca Valley, they invested um a couple of days, and so did Kindrichland, and that was like substitute teaching, things like that. What makes ours a little bit different is for the lottery ticket process, so pick up on the application. You know, grandma, neighbor, Annie, Aunt, father, friend, anybody can pick up that ticket, and then so that, so they don't have to take it down. If they know any neighbor, oh, you got, hi, I'm picking up one for this parent, I'm picking up one for this parent, I'm picking up one for that, that's fine too. And then also for the lottery process, we've had like last year, we had one American, she had six different registration packets. She kept out for the two hours, but she got her own type of neighborhood registered, so we're trying to work with people that. They have to have a lottery ticket that matches the student's name, but that way it can kind of alleviate. And then we also say for our kindergarten preview days, which will be on Friday, May thirteenth, once again, frame, grandma, any, anybody can bring that little one in. And again, the lottery, excuse me, the precase assessment, I advise it, it's not necessary, it helps us in building our classes, and it gives us that baseline for our little ones, where they're coming into us. Um, let's, we try to work with parents in that sense.
Do people bring in the little ones? Do they need advice and scan like the normal?
Coming in to pick up the lottery ticket?
No, the pre, for the preview day.
We're not going to do the quote kindergarten preview, just like we have done in the past. Um, for those of you who aren't aware, when we did a kindergarten preview day, we would literally bring the little ones, and it's only because of COVID, we're not doing it. We have all the little ones come in, they take a tour of the school, you have scavenger hunt with Mrs. McCall, um, we would then take a bus ride, I mean, it was an intense day, it was a fun day. But unfortunately with COVID, we just don't feel comfortable doing that this time, um, so we're going to, we'll go with that. But we go to the precase assessment and that answers, no, you do not have, because literally, you, you come to the primary center, we even meet you at the door, seat you down and take your little one to do the assessment and bring little one right back to you with a copy of the completed assessment. Exactly how you tell me, share that.
I want to ask you a question, Michael McMahon, or I'm sorry, I ask a question. Oh, gotcha. Is there any vacation, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, um, Launchpad, is it the turning ever?
At, at this point?
And again. Is that a touchy topic?
No, well, it makes me sad, it makes me sad, no, it makes me sad because I thought it was, that was a really cool, I thought it was a really cool deal. Um, but um, in, in just putting it out there, literally the state had told us, when I created that program, I created it in my head, okay? Just kind of made this kind of thing, oh, that's we got, and what our point in process for that was taking little ones who were on that cusp and trying to give them a greater amount of exposure. Because, you know, if you work with your little ones at home, you might think that all parents do, parents are busy, with double working families, things like that. And so not everyone gets that kind of reinforcement at home, just not out of malice or lack of, and then, just literally people are busy. So when I created the program, it was strictly to be intervention program. However, the state told us that we weren't, because it wasn't offered for special education students, it was literally for intervention, greater exposure. Because years ago, I held a kindergarten camp, and what happened was, parents would say, well, we're only going to go to camp for two weeks, because we don't want to miss that one week. Like, no, family vacation is so important, I don't want you to miss that, but then the parents went back, the little ones come in for the kindergarten camp, and I respect that. So I went to the board and said, and I tried, this is what I'm thinking, and it was strictly for intervention, and it was based on the precase assessment scores. We put in the bottom twenty percent, that's how we kind of picked in literacy and reading this week. And then the state told us by not opening it up to all special ed students and everything, that we were discriminating, so we could not find that program.
So then it was opened up, it was then opened up then to some kids with IEPs following year?
No, actually, no, the only IEP students that were in that program, you had a speech, because you can have two different, or a speech, you can have artic, articulation, or you can have a, I don't know, an expression. An expression often will lead you to, or expression of, well, it'll kind of morph sometimes into a disability or something like that. And so we had speech students in there all week, because, and the reason for that, Julia, was that the students that came to us with an IEP, they were receiving specially designed instructions. They were getting that extra support, and you have those little ones that, they're not under an IEP, they don't apply for, there's no bonus disability that's diagnosed or anything, they're just, just not getting it. So we thought if we could give them greater exposure, it could help them, and I think, I think it was really successful, however, the state said that we were discriminating, that we couldn't find a program like that.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. McMahon. Ms. Brans there?
Um, yeah, just wanted to um, thank the board, all, board appreciation month. Thank you, everyone, for all that you do with the district. Um, I just want to mention that we're pretty heavy into budget plan right now, and um, just wanted to remind the board that there'll be finance committee meetings starting February eighth, at six o'clock, will be the first one. And there'll be one on March eighth and April twelve, so.
All of it? Are you all of it?
Oh, six o'clock, yes. So um, those will be coming and I'll be getting agenda out for them in advance for each of the meetings.
Thank you. We have an internal meeting tomorrow at one o'clock.
We do, yes.
Try to get our thoughts together and be prepared for this.
Thank you. Dr. Goshen?
Just wanted to reiterate what Dr. McMahon said on the twenty-first of February, uh, we have an in-service on social emotional interventions and strategies for adults and children. And also since now I've got our board appreciation month, and all that you do also.
Thank you. Troy?
Um, I don't remember how I said, thank you so much for your support and your um dedication to the students of this, this community. Um, my brother ran for sport where he lives, that passed through crazy, you know, he's administrator of different districts, and he's both ends of it, but thank you for what you do. It's another sacred job, and it's involved late at night, that's definitely a thing I never wanted to, but anyway, in my position, but I'm getting paid to be here, so. Yeah, but thank you for what you do. I just wanted to reiterate about reading rockets, the, the teachers enjoyed it, the students enjoyed it, parents enjoyed it, the feedback I got. Uh, I remember after like maybe the third night, Mrs. Vitski's like, Mr. Lake, this is great, this story, and that's great to hear. I have people in my neighborhood, you know, you can do that again in the spring, I'm like, well, I'm not sure, now we are, I wasn't sure at that time. So the, the feedback I get is, is very, very good, that's, you know, usually people want to reach out with positive feedback, because you approach them more well than all. They were like, here's a free thanks, they were very, so shaping up that, so paying that feedback, people will come back to do that, that would be good to hear. My, my youngest daughter, Blover, has some math tutoring, uh, with the program, unbelievably, uh, she's unbelievable how she progressed because of that extra hour, you know, once a week. So I, as a dad, I can see that, her confidence now in math is much more than what we were before. So I'm glad that program's continuing, um, I hope we get enough teachers to establish it, so we'll see how that goes, but I'm sure glad that it's continuing. Glad to be back after Christmas break, I need a little bit of structure after being home for eleven days, and then there's, right, the couch watching cultural walking, but I'm back. It's been very hectic, um, last week and a half, what you said, so it's, it's a lot going on, but glad to be here and glad to be back, so it's a good thing for you to do it.
Thank you. I'm sure Shwab ran out to put information out about that. And he's, yeah, he's on it, so, he does not have a report because he's big enough. So then, let me say administrators.
I'm very pleased.
Oh, right, yeah, sorry, you're in a corner. I can never remember you in a corner.
Uh, again, just thank the board for their service and dedication and their support. Um, as the resident nerd, I'm very excited about implementing the left con grant. I envision getting a sixty-five inch table and doing some tennis star things, but in reality, I'll probably just lose the checkers.
Mike, thanks, you are sitting in the corner. Board comment discussion, before we get on that, I want to mention something, because I'll forget about it. Sally, do you have something for board comment before I forget about you?
No, but thank you. No, but thank you, John.
Alright, perfect. Um, board comment, any comment I got that I have to say is, I'm a back policy public here, um, no matter what issue you have and you bring it to the board, that's fine. This is what, this is what I want, and I think this is the board wants, is to try to get back into the norm as much as we can, so I do appreciate people coming in. Some support comment on this side?
I'll second, it's great to have a room full, we have a room full of people every week, for whatever subject it is, I mean, obviously, we're representing public and we're speaking here from the public, it's such a missed time, it's that everybody comes. So, thank you on whatever side, whatever subject it is, and it's what it is, if you're people listening, not the best decision we can make. So, as far as COVID, I just say the same thing, everybody's frustrated, everybody's sick of it, everybody wants it to be over, it is what it is, we just all have to be patient with each other, let's just be candid to go through this. I mean, it's, it is what it is, it's, it's frustrating for everybody, so thank you everybody for your patience. I would say this community has done an excellent job, and not everybody's had always the same thing, if you happen to have any, any, any real out of control situation, which has been, so thank you to everybody.
Any other board comment this side?
I just want to say congrats to Waters Future Business Leaders of America, who won in their championships, and then also um to the first place students over in the hometown, tied to competition.
To this side of the room?
Um, I just wanted to say and reiterate, when I ran the school board, COVID was not a thing, we didn't even, it never happened, I never expected to be sitting here making help decisions, all I really wanted to do was talk about academics, so here we are. Um, thanks to everyone who brought their kids here, it keeps us all honest and helps us remember why we're here, it's super nice when we get to see kids here. Uh, thank you to our school nurses, who are total rock stars and who are working extra hours and doing things that I'm sure they also didn't realize are part of their jobs when they took those jobs, we're very, very grateful. And thanks to Josh trouble, he's not even here to hear my thank you, I, we appreciate that you're sending emails that kind of content, I'm playing a part in the process, so.
He just texted me, no report. I say, no, I think we got.
Never had a report in all the years I've been at board meetings, number one.
They'll say, yeah.
And I just hope parents understand, you know, we're doing the best we can to kind of respect everyone's varying belief system, you know, COVID is a very linear thing, people on very far sides of it, and we're trying.
Any other board members outside the room?
I agree with Anthony and Warren said, it's a good to have public back and presence at our board meetings, and in an empty room and have a screen, it's hard to make those connections, so this is what it's supposed to be, but thank you for your help.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Megan Simmons.
Kevin, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We agree, it's uh, January.